...cost internet, 5G, high speeds, at very affordable rates.
We actually committed to not discontinue any subscribers who were unable to pay their monthly subscriber fees due to hardships from the crisis.
Digital inclusion is so important, I think, especially right now. It's actually really important that everybody has kind of like that same opportunity.
Internet connectivity is much like a utility these days, just like running water, electricity. It's a vibrant piece of how we live, especially for our students.
We partnered to provide 120,000 students with internet access who did not have any access, at no cost to the students, with families who could not otherwise afford it.
Being connected is just part of everyday life these days, especially in this time of COVID-19. When people are applying for jobs, they're doing it online. The way people are accessing their doctors are through telehealth. Also, for those who are running businesses, they also need connectivity. So it's important to make sure that everyone has access.
Almost every aspect of your day-to-day life, right, has been digitized. So without affordable internet, it's more and more difficult to participate in kind of this global economy that's tied together via the internet. Get connected, Los Angeles.
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 2020 has been a year of improvisation. We have found new ways of shopping, of working from home, even the way we socialize has been reinvented to a degree. And since this is also an election year, the city of Los Angeles is making a big move to expand how we can cast our ballots with confidence.
When you saw these boxes, it's making it easier for the public to come and vote instead of for the mailing.
Because of the situation we're living in, everybody needs to vote, and there's a, obviously, they put a mail box here for voting that the city of Los Angeles. I hope they do that throughout the county.
I think it's just to make it easier access for people to put in their votes. Just gives them a faster way of doing stuff without having to come in contact with people.
This is very resistant, it's very secure. We have three boxes, one for putting the vote in this cajita, and outside we have two keys, so that people don't have to open it. I think it's very good for the people who want to come when they go to vote, come to these libraries. We're putting them in all over California, all over the South of California, so that it's more practical for the people. So come and vote, put your vote here, it's going to be safe.
Angelinos have relied heavily on frontliners and first responders as the COVID-19 pandemic persists. But for many, there has also been a realization that the best preparation for an emergency is training and self-reliance. One community in Council District 10 is taking that message to heart and taking action.
It's as much to keep yourselves also from becoming a victim.
Walking aimlessly with a broken arm.
They're just going to have to shelter in place.
Minor bleeding control.
Okay.
Which was taken care of. Other than that, he's okay with the pin sticking out.
You know, missing an arm, you're going to have to triage and report that.
Yeah, you can stop the bleeding, but it goes from maybe delayed to an immediate, depending on the type of blood form you see coming from the body.
Remember, when you're approaching a house, you look for damage, you're looking for smell of gas, you're looking for all these official things right off the top.
Severed leg, left leg, bleeding control.
You've got people who are there with them right now.
Bacerations to face an arm.
The idea is to get all of your opinions on what this experience meant to you today on so many levels.
And I saw the dummies, I stopped and I, you know, went up like it was a real person, you know, checked the pulse, just, you know, to get me in the mode.
LACCD opts out of opening campuses, LA Represents is offering legal aid, and Metro Bike offers a discount for September. These stories up next on City Beat.
Due to the continuing efforts to decrease the cases of COVID-19, the Los Angeles Community College District will continue online for the rest of the academic year. A few exceptions will be in place for students taking courses such as Certified Nurse Assistance and Electricians. The decision not to reopen the campus mainly affects students of low income and students of color who make up the majority of the college students in the district and rely on the campus for food, healthcare, and other supportive services. The campus will remain closed until at least summer 2021. September is Bike Month, and Metro is presenting a deal that's hard to pass up: 30 days for $1. Cruise along the city and enjoy not only the sights but the knowledge of how little it costs to do so. Access low-cost transportation from a fleet of about 1,400 bikes and includes 93 stations in downtown Los Angeles, Venice, and the Port of Los Angeles. Check out bikeshare metro.net to sign up for the 30-day pass and be sure to use the promo code RidesSeptember. Hardships have been abundant during the pandemic, but the city of LA is here to help. Mayor Aragorn Cetti and LA City Attorney Mike Fuhr have joined forces to present LA Represents, a pro bono initiative to provide free legal services. LA Represents, a coalition of law firms, bar associations, and attorneys, will provide COVID-19-related legal services, including helping tenants, domestic violence victims, and low-income individuals with employment, consumer debt, and bankruptcy matters. To find out how the city can help you, visit
A few weeks ago, we introduced you to Radical Cram School, a web series that spoke directly to young kids about issues of social and racial inequality. This week, we had the opportunity to talk to Benedict Coulter, a young adult author who is also trying to inform and empower kids about the timely issue of dealing with COVID-19.
Wearing a mask does make a difference. It's a great way to fight that virus and making sure it doesn't grow.
I have three kids, they're teenagers now, but I certainly have had the experience with kids that it's, you know, to try to make them do something that they don't like to do or don't understand why they have to do it. It's so challenging for parents. As this started to really spread around the country, I felt that it was kind of important to try to explain to kids what was going on, because even as parents, we were kind of thrown in a loop of all the things that were happening. I was compelled to write the book by a mom who was really desperate to make her son understand why he needed to wear a mask. I had friends who had younger kids who said, you know, the kids just don't really quite understand what's going on. And I thought, you know, what I'm going to do, I'm going to do the same thing as I've been doing with all the other books.
Wash your hands with soap and water and count to 10 before you stop.
As far as the content, I always try to put myself in the child's perspective and make it as simple as possible. I've made it free, I've made the other two books that I've recently written free also. I think the message is more important than anything.
Among the myriad of events canceled or postponed because of the pandemic, the annual book sale from the Westchester Rotary Book Club has survived. The event was derailed for the spring but found new footing over the Labor Day weekend. Channel 35 was there to cover this annual South Bay fundraiser.
We have an annual book sale that is normally over Memorial Day weekend that because of COVID, we weren't able to do this year, so we did it over Labor Day. This entire event is put on by volunteers, and all of the books that we get are donated from people in the community.
I'm trying to build my own personal library, and this is a good way to do it. Here, I can get a bag of books for a good price and support a good cause.
We have 47 different categories of books, ranging from paperback fiction, hardback fiction, art, architecture. It runs a whole gamut from A to Z. It is regularly considered one of the best nonprofit community events of the year. So we're proud of this event and what we do for the community.
It's good because it's an opportunity to get some interaction with people and to get some material to feed your mind. We've got all these restaurants feeding our bodies, we need something to feed our mind, too.
We thank the Westchester community and really the local South Bay community for supporting us for the last 65 years, and we look forward to this event and to continuing to raise funds to support the community.
Okay, so the food pantries are keeping folks fed. Hand sanitizer can easily be found in every drugstore, and many of us have finally worked out working from home. But who's looking after the folks that give us our daily dose of funny? We asked that question of TMI Hollywood, a local comedy troupe that has taken their live show online.
TMI Hollywood is a sketch comedy show that I created back in 2012. Our original idea was to kind of be something like Saturday Night Live mixed with TMZ, mixed with, I guess, The Daily Show. You know, and the great thing about doing the live show is that the minute you commit to it for the year, you're looking at 25 original shows during the course of that year, and for those 25 weeks, the process starts on Monday morning and ends at 10 o'clock on Sunday night. Our last show was on March 15th, and the whole week leading up to it, we kept hearing about how the virus was getting worse and how at any point in time, we might go into some kind of shutdown. And during the course of that week, I think we almost canceled the show three or four different times. And as the week progressed, more and more people in the cast kept dropping out, you know, for good reasons. And so at the end of the show, I just, I mean, at the very last second to, you know, for one of our actors to say, "We're going to take a couple of weeks off until everything kind of gets worked out. Hopefully, we'll see you back here in about two or three weeks." So what happened was when we realized that we weren't going to be coming back and it wasn't going to be a week or two, late in the first week, I said, "Well, we got to do something." And my first thought was to just do a lot of Zoom sketches. And we started doing some of that stuff, and it seemed like it was going to be fine. But again, like anything else, you're really limited with how much you can do. And the humor at some point just kind of gets repetitive because of the limitations that we have. And I said, "Well, why don't we just stick a bunch of our actors and some of our writers on screen, and instead of trying to be funny, why don't we talk about what's going on in our lives right now?" Now, because we're doing it in this format where we're asking people to come on for little chunks of time, maybe it's 20 minutes, a half hour, we're getting these amazing guests that are really just fascinating to talk to. I've had a civil rights activist, Hermine Hartman. She was marching with Jesse Jackson in the 60s and is a major civil rights figure in Chicago to this day. And so having the ability to do this show, we kind of get into insight that we never did before, because obviously, when we're doing a live theater show, we're kind of sticking to a script and we're just trying to do the words that are on the page. And that's great, and that's something I adore doing, but, you know, I'm learning so much about people that I didn't know, learning about.
This exhibit was our way of just marking the important day of August 28, 1963. It was also our way to give homage to the many men and women and children who lost their lives in the civil rights movement. Those who fought for us, those who died for us, and those who struggled. This is just our way of just taking time to pause and reflect on what that march meant, on what the civil rights movement meant. It meant the Civil Rights Act taking place. It meant that there was more freedom for us today. We stand on the shoulders of so many men and women who gave their lives and who fought for us. And so we did not have the opportunity that so many people could go to the march in Washington this year, that we wanted to provide some education, and we wanted a place where people could come and just pause, say thank you, and reflect on the sacrifice and on the struggle that has taken place in this country.
Over the years, as all this, you know, post-mortality, people dying, people killing, I realized this exhibit is to help people know that, you know, this did happen, and there needs to be some type of change. There's definitely a problem in America, and we're trying to really, really, really solve it and reach it. And this exhibit, you know, tells the story and shows that this actually happened. I think this exhibit is very, very, very powerful, and I think it's very helpful, and it challenges the problem and injustice.
Awareness and education of history is very important in order to progress and move forward and make the future better. And in the climate of the social injustices that we see today, I think something like this is extremely important for all people to see.
This exhibit is also about the many men and women who have lost their lives to police brutality in this country. We have seen far too many black and brown young people, men and women, to lose their lives. And so we've got to make sure that black lives matter, that all lives matter in this country. And so this exhibit also takes time where you'll be able to see individuals, unfortunately, who have lost their lives. We need full justice for all, and we need to make sure that people understand that black lives matter in this country and around the world. We still have work to do. So this exhibit was sponsored by the Black Hollywood Education and Resource Center, and this was our way to pay tribute and homage to individuals who marched, to say thanks and to remember justice and freedom which still has not been realized here in our country yet.
Virtual concerts mean Music Mondays in September. Read up with the Los Angeles Libro Festival, and the Autry opens its Best of L.A. Archives. All this up next on Virtual Things to Do.
Be sure to check out The Autry Presents: The Best of Los Angeles. Live music and museums come together during this video series. The Autry presents cinematic acoustic performances by some of LA's best musical artists, all filmed live on location in the Autry's galleries. Performances will be released online every other week. Treat yourself and check out The Autry Presents: The Best of Los Angeles. Available to enjoy now through December 2020. For more information on upcoming performances, visit theautry.org/bestofla. Have your next great literary experience online. Los Angeles Libros Festival is a free bilingual book festival for the whole family. Celebrating heritage, the festival will feature storytelling, musical performances, local and international authors, art workshops, books, and more. The 2020 Los Angeles Libros Festival will take place virtually on Facebook and YouTube beginning on Saturday, September 26. The Japan Foundation Los Angeles presents Music Mondays. Cheer up with virtual concert. The JFLA promotes international awareness and mutual understanding between Japan and the US through cultural exchange. Beginning in September, JFLA will be presenting live music performances via Facebook Live every Monday. Join talented performers like Gary Matsumoto and Kai Kurosawa, who will play a carefully curated repertoire dedicated especially to you, their audience. Don't miss Music Mondays. Cheer up with virtual concert. You can find out more at their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Rasha Goel. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thank you for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and we're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 22nd. I'm Nuri Martinez, the president of the city council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Blumenfield. Councilmember Bonin.
Bonin here.
Buscaino.
Here.
Sadio.
Sadio. Harris Dawson.
Present.
Corretts.
Here.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez. Rue.
Present.
Wesson.
Here.
And once more from the top, Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, present.
Sadio. Twelve members present and a quorum. Madam President.
Okay, thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes of September 16th.
Mr. Buscayino moves, and Mr. Lee seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Krikorian moves, and Mr. Herb seconds next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Mr. Bonin, can you please see this in the pledge of allegiance, sir?
It'll be my pleasure. Thank you. Everybody could please stand and face a flag. You can put your hands over your heart and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Think we would have just done that. Hello, Madam Chair.
Oh, Mr. Sadio, how are you? Good morning.
God yield.
It's in shine, everybody. It's Sadio present.
Madam Clerk, please note that Mr. Sadio is present.
Thank you. And Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order. Next.
Madam President, there are requests from the Department of Building and Safety to continue items 1A, C, D, and G to November 10th, for item 1F, for the lien to be reduced to $1,042.01, and continue to November 10th, and finally, to confirm the liens for items 1B and 1E.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. What's next?
Items 1 through 5 are items noticed for public hearing. Items 6 through 20 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 21 through 42 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item 43 is a closed session item that has been considered by the Budget and Finance Committee. And on the supplemental agenda, items 44 through 46 are items for which public hearings have been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objections, those items are now before us. Members, do you wish to call any of these items special? Mr. Price?
To recuse myself from item 12, please.
Okay, recusal on item number 12 on Mr. Price. Any other items? Mr. Price?
No, no, Madam President. Thank you.
Mr. Bonin?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call item 11 special for brief comments. That'll be all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thanks, Madam President. I'd like to call item 13 special for comments.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blumenfield?
Thank you. Uh, may I call item 18 special for comments, please?
Okay, thank you. Any others? Mr. Bon- Mr. I'm sorry, Mr. Blumenfield?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on the following items. Let's vote on items 6 through 10, items 14 through 17, items 19 and 20, and items 44 through 46. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscayino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian. Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez. Rue.
Aye.
Uh, that Rodriguez, aye. Councilmember Rue.
Yes.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
14 ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and move on to public comment. Madam Clerk, please read the call-in information provided on today's agenda, followed by the city attorney.
Thank you, Madam President. And as indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. And again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak.
I'll now explain the speaking rules and some new procedures in light of Zoom. So, to members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. Please speak on the items first before providing general public comment. We'll tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you're speaking on an agenda item, you'll get one brief warning from me or the President. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic, or again straight off topic, the President will cut you off, and you'll forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. We're going to take 40 minutes total of public comment. The items that are open for public comment are items 1 through 5, 21 through 42 only. Uh, the clerks can correct me if that's wrong. Finally, as you may know, Zoom altered some of its settings, and we're going to try something slightly different today. So, everybody will be, if you press star 9 to be admitted to speak, you'll be in the waiting room, you'll be able to hear the meeting going on. Anna is going to say your last four digits to bring you into the meeting. You're going to be brought into the meeting muted. So, you need to press star 6. That's to repeat, star 6 to unmute yourself. So, please being pay- please pay attention. When it's your turn, and Anna brings you into the meeting, um, please immediately press star 6 so that you're unmuted, and then tell us which items you'd like to speak on, and we'll go from there. Um, so this is a test run. I hope everybody pays attention, so this runs smoothly. If it does, um, we'll try it again. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Why don't we go ahead and start taking the first caller?
Caller with the phone number ending in 7719, please press star 6. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn, uh, from Studio City, and I'll speak on, uh, the available items and the general public comment.
Okay, three minutes and one minute for your general public comment. Go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Yeah, I want to thank, uh, Mitch O'Farrell and Kern Price for putting, uh, an item on the agenda about, um, extending a lease for 845 rentable square feet. This is related to the bid. Now, bids are something that you hear people object to sometimes, but property owners and business people love them because they assess themselves and then spend the money, uh, mostly power washing people away, which is not nice. And, you know, on-the-ground security and all this sort of makes a weird relationship with LAPD. So, I just, you know, the bids are, are a part of city government that I think don't necessarily help. So, anyway, this is an interesting detail, and they're getting it at market rate, which is so low, you can't believe it. If anybody could get something on Cherokee for that price, that would be amazing. But in any case, thank you. And, uh, regarding Sadio doling out $75,000 for beautification in CD1, well done. You know, this is what we are supposed to do, push it out the door. But I don't like the, uh, clause that says, "Payment to any agency, organization, or entity as appropriate." As appropriate, per who? It should be clear, and we should not have it so be wiggly because that, that allows stuff to wiggle away. Um, the, uh, 350 additional beds, shelter beds in Price's district, I mean, I looked down my, I just, good work. I mean, how is that possible? It just sounds like such, uh, a thing to say, but who knows if it's going to happen? Uh, nice to see Amcal Washington Fund LP, uh, getting in there, and, uh, city-owned property at fair market value of approximately 7.5 million per a September 16 appraisal. But here's the thing. These appraisals need to be made public. That's the problem, is that it's done over there, and it allows for a kind of, uh, wait, that's worth more, or wait, that's worth less. Memorably, Patrick Sunshong was getting a piece of property that, of course, he was getting a good price because it was on the hills. We don't want to pay too much for stuff on the hills. It's hard to develop. But as rich people know, that's where the value is. So, it was a complete Herb Wesson deal, totally outrageous, and, uh, I'll get back on subject. Kudos to Metabolic Studio LLC for getting a $75,000 a year contract to watch the water wheel spin down by, uh, O'Farrell's district. I don't know. I mean, it seems a little excessive for a 50-year water wheel project contract. I mean, all they have to do is watch it spin. I mean, maybe do a little maintenance. Um, regarding the smart teams, this is where you send mental health people out. Good work. Horrifying TASER case in, uh, in, in, in the news recently. And it draws attention to the, the bad job you've been doing and your partners over at County Board of Supervisors, uh, making public testimony available on items before these bodies buy. By reducing, the city council's reduced by more than a third because the dropping Friday is a third right away, and then half the committee meetings seem to have disappeared or been consolidated. So, this is a great reduction.
Mr. Previn, can you move on to your general public comment?
Well, if you insist, sure. I'll just continue on theme, which is that the Board of Supervisors are even more, uh, negligent, having dropped half of their Brown Act meetings in front of the public. These are public meetings for a reason. Now, it's true that both the city and the county were more accustomed to packing the meetings full of glad-handing, you know, presentations to treasured partners and city, uh, you know, people, I guess is the right word. Donors is another way to call it. But I think it's really time for them to come back to a regular schedule. We do have on our agenda today that they would like to extend the emergency for COVID. But how about reduce and stop blocking people from sharing what they think about what's happening in the city? And in Studio City, I wanted to say congratulations to Randall Fraud, who has done an, sorry, Freed, who has done an astonishing job of sort of disassembling one of the few transparency and accountability operations left. We just discovered that the City of L.A. is going to be on the hook for $475,000.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Can just move on to the next speaker?
Caller with the phone number ending in 4208, please press star 6. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
This is Rob Quan. I'd like to speak on item 35 and general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute for each. Go ahead.
So, uh, item 35 is our emergency declaration that we, uh, fire off every few weeks. Um, I wonder when this council is going to return to its normal rate of function. Uh, it was kind of understandable early on, as everybody was dealing with triage in response to COVID. But is this going to be our new normal for the next year? Um, we saw Councilmember Rue griping a few months ago because he felt like he could have gotten the vacancy tax together on the ballot if council was meeting full-time. Uh, I think it's also worth noting that you had Judge Carter in chambers last week. Normally, we'd see that in person, but with COVID, we can't. Uh, why the hell didn't you just turn on the feed for Channel 35 or the live stream so we could see that? Uh, why don't we have a Brady Bunch screen so we can see all your faces during our meetings? Why aren't you posting events online? Why is public comment still being asked for the bare minimum? Because this has been the new normal, and you don't really give a fuck about it. Uh, you don't want to defund the police, but you have no fucking problem defunding open government, transparency, and ethics at City Hall in the midst of an FBI investigation. We spend about as much on LAPD's budget as we do, uh, on LAPD's PR budget as we do the Ethics Commission charge with policing ethics at City Hall. For my general public comment, again, favela, where are you? Price recused himself on item 12 and provided no explanation. Where are the rest of the council members? This, this potted plant mentality is why Jose Wezar ran amok. Appointment process is for redistricting to begin, and it's off to an uninspiring start. Apparently, there was an August 31 letter sent by the CLA to start the process, but that's nowhere to be found in any of the council files. Instead of a common essential, uh, collecting form, we've got a hodgepodge of intake. Uh, Councilmember Rodriguez submitted the letter without even providing a resume. The bare minimum you could have done was provide enhanced disclosure on appointment. Props to Councilmember Herb Wesson. Uh, Pastor Eddie's a great choice for the Redistricting Commission. I'm grateful that Holly Mitchell has brought the best out of you over the last nine months. Um, and on that note, I'll, I'll hand it over to the next commenter. You have my time. Fuck y'all.
Next speaker?
Caller with the phone number ending in 6068, please press star 6. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yes, this is Richie Sergejko, uh, from People City Council in Sunrise, L.A. I'd like to speak on item 35 and, uh, general public comment, please.
Do you have one minute for each? Go ahead.
Yeah, so for, uh, item 35, this is about, uh, the resolution for state of emergency. Um, the, the mayor has heightened powers right now, uh, under the state of emergency order. Um, you know, he could cancel rent, he could seize the hotels, um, and you do have the power as, uh, city council members, uh, to put pressure on the mayor. Um, I wonder if you, any of you had any conversations with him, uh, directly or with his office directly? I mean, he was a former council member himself. I'm sure plenty of you have good relationships with him. Um, you can reach out to him and say, hey, the people, well, he hears from, um, from us too. So, I, I, we wonder if any of you even care. Um, but yeah, you, you can all reach out and say, the people have been calling in desperately to cancel rents, defund the police, um, and under these heightened, uh, emergency powers, he, he can cancel rent, he can seize the hotels. He, you all can open up those, uh, LAPD contracts since we're about to be in a fiscal emergency. Um, you know, for four months now.
Please move on to your general public comment.
General public comment, absolutely. Uh, you know, as Rob Quan said, you all used to, uh, meet on Fridays. You don't do that anymore. I wonder if you're ever going to come back. Nury, I, I know you don't like working that much. Um, you know, we've been saying, defund the police, cancel rents. It's like, we're going to keep calling, and it's going to be like, next month's going to be five months, and six months, seven months. It's going to be full year. You guys haven't done anything. Marquis Harris Dawson, shout out to you. Thanks for unblocking People City Council. Glad to have an ally like you on City Council. We hope, uh, we hope we can submit, make some moves. There's a, there's an opportunity for council to step up. There are people dying on the streets, 19 unhoused folks over the long Labor Day weekend. I wonder if any of you are truly caring about this. Project Room Key, only 4,000 out of 15,000 rooms have been filled. Do you guys get these numbers?
Thank you. Just go ahead and take the next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1248, please press star 6. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Mimi from CD4. I'd like to speak on item 35 and give general public comment, please.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Uh, one minute for both items?
For each.
All right. Oh, okay, thank you. Um, okay, so for item 35, um, the resolution for state of emergency, as the caller before me said, you know, the mayor has heightened powers. That means he can cancel the rent and seize hotels. That means that you, the city council, need to put the pressure on him to do it. I keep hearing how you don't have the power to do anything, but you do have the power to put pressure on those. to do anything, but you do have the power to put pressure on those who can do something. Like, you guys are your own mini-mayors. You have so much power. Do what's in your power. And for what is, like, what's out of your jurisdiction? Put pressure on people who can do it. Like, we've been at the mayor's house. We've been in his emails. We've been calling. We've been putting the pressure on, and clearly, he doesn't care what we have to say. So can y'all step up and do your job, which is to speak for us? Okay, I'm gonna move on to general public comment. First of all, thank you guys for finally fixing the issue of calling in. We've been calling in for five months, always acting through the same thing. It all comes down to defunding the police. The city just reloaded a bunch of employees without even touching the police, who also just got a raise as well. Also, I think your guys' offices weren't even touched. We're trying to work with you here. We haven't gotten anywhere with you for months. What are you doing if you're not going to listen to the people you supposedly serve? Defunding the police, yes, it's just the beginning, but it's a much-needed start. You guys aren't even trying to work with us. We're taking time out of our days to do this. We're not being paid. We're serving our community, your community. Meanwhile, the cops keep killing and brutalizing and lying about it. Like, this shit makes me want to cry. And it seems like you guys don't care. Like, show that you care by doing something. Like, I'm tired of having to call in, and I'm tired of having to hear that the police have killed people.
Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in one zero four seven, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Good morning, council. It's Sylvester from the nonprofit organization, The Love We Don't See, and I would like to speak on item thirty-five and public comment.
You have one minute for each. Go ahead.
So we started off this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and that pledge has words in it, and those words have meaning to it. Dr. King said, "All we're asking America to do is, is to do what you said on paper." And when we're talking about emergency funds and we're talking about where this money needs to go to, it's clear we need to solve the homelessness problem. We need to solve the poverty issue, and that's not going to be solved by over-investing in police. And when you understand how the system of policing works, it's not that we hate police officers individually. It's the system of policing and the fact that it's predicated on crime. It doesn't exist without crime. So if we over-invest in policing, but we don't address the poverty issue that we know has been created by systemic racism, by redlining, by gerrymandering, you know, then we're going to constantly have situations where crime and unrest permeates because we have to understand it's environmental, and you're putting the lives of these officers at risk as well. You're putting the lives of these officers at risk as well by continuously sending them into poverty-stricken environments instead of over-investing in rehabilitating those environments. I've called before, and I'll call again. Publicly make a stand on amending the Thirteenth Amendment, eliminating slavery under any circumstance and exception, and eliminate the incentive to over-criminalize poverty. Because that's the issue, and history's gonna look back, and what I'm hoping comes from this is that you take a stand to at least make a statement and just say something. You can't change it, but then you can get the ball rolling. I'm pleading with the council. You have an opportunity to end slavery. We didn't do it in eighteen sixty-five. We can do it in twenty twenty. Please make a stand, Nury, Herb. Please make a stand.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in six zero three four one, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in zero three four one, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in zero three four one, please press star six.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, my name is Eric, and I'd like to speak on item thirty-five and general public comment.
You have one minute for each. Go ahead.
First, I just want to thank the people that are saying everything on there. They are repeat callers. And both embarrassingly, yet probably this is by person calling in, but I realize that my circumstances have gotten more dire. So I want to speak on the resolution for state of emergency that will give the mayor heightened powers to cancel rent and seize hotel rooms and a Project Room Key. Well, that was, that was part of the solution of getting people who are currently unhoused in Los Angeles and having them housed in hotels. Apparently, like, what, less than a quarter, a little bit about a quarter of those rooms that were promised have actually been filled, and over Labor Day weekend, you know, nineteen people had died. And my roommate is asthmatic, and I can't, like, even begin to imagine that if, so right now, we're in issues with our housing situation, but I can't even imagine that if we had been evicted just, you know, weeks earlier, that they could have, their life could have been in danger.
You want to move on to your general public comment, please?
Yes, defund the police. The city is in a fiscal emergency, and this ridiculous amount that's going to our policing departments when, right now, we are having these issues with evictions, with homelessness. So it kept the drop program, and really, it's up to you, all the councils, the voice of Los Angeles, to step up and pressure the mayor and pressure Los Angeles Police to have our well done. That is your job, and you're failing at it. And I know it sucks to be told that you suck at your job, but, you know, it can be better. It doesn't have to be this way. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in seven five four three, please press star six.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for having me today. My name is Lionel Morris from CD Six. Thank you, Nury Martinez, President. Calling regarding general comment.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I would like to address the plastic and trash problems within the valley. When I worked for the US government counting homelessness encampments and around parks and around the block, and there's a lot of trash and plastic, I think that we should help our unhoused neighbors by providing them basic needs, like trash bins, recycling bins, and portable potties, like restrooms, so the unhoused neighbors can have a place to put in their trash, their recyclables, and their bathroom near them. Because some encampments have, like, bins and portable restrooms, but not all of them. So I think we should help them out by providing those things so there will not be so much trash around the street sidewalks and parks, including the rivers and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in seven four five six, please press star six. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Francis Orr. My name is Francis Orr, and I haven't actually read the agenda item, so public comment, hopefully, it's relevant to specifically what we're doing today. But I, I've just been...
Hold on for just a second. Do you want to speak on any of the items on today's agenda?
I haven't been able to review the agenda, so I'm gonna just say one public comment.
Okay, you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. First of all, thank you to our city council members who are really pushing right now to normalize not being afraid of our community members instead of listening to a fear-driven narrative about, that the police are giving us. But I think there's a lot of ways that we can cut budget that we are not listening to, and I think we also ought to get the sheriffs to give us a list of where they're, where they would suggest cutting. First, for like a billion dollars, because I've been listening to them, and every time, it's not, this isn't the program to cut, we promise. This isn't the program to cut, we promise. We could also do domestic abuse checks and fire and take away the pensions of anyone who has, who has committed domestic abuse or murders. We could save a lot of money that way. Also, thirty million dollars on suites. We could house fifteen hundred people by making them new houses on land we already own. So there's a lot of ways, I think, that we're not looking at. Thank you for continuing to investigate this.
Thank you.
Please keep pushing for our incarcerated members of our community. Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in nine five zero two, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Adam Polarski. I'd like to speak on item thirty-five and give general public comment.
You have one minute for each. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I'll just echo everything that's been said before, and I'll keep it brief. We need a resolution for state of emergency right now. I don't know if any of you have realized, but we are in the most dire straits we've been in in a very, very long time. We are facing a pandemic. We are facing a recession. We are facing historic uprisings amongst the most disenfranchised parts of our communities, and the mayor has heightened powers. We need to seize the hotels. We need to cancel rents, or Los Angeles will be due for a terrible reckoning and will be insane on this country in terms of quality of life and human rights. And of course, my general public comment, we've been calling in for five months now. Our demands have not changed. Defund the police. The LAPD and the LASD, for that matter, have proven themselves to be completely unscrupulous and, just in general, completely unethical institutions that have continued to batter and brutalize Angelenos all over the world, not world city. I yield my time, of course. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in nine zero four two, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in nine zero four two, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in nine zero four two, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in one two four eight, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in one two four eight, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in three four eight nine, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in seven four five six, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hey, it's Francis again. The item I'd like to speak on is regarding Project Room Key.
So...
And our homelessness.
So do you...
Is that all right?
So you want general public comment, I think?
I've already made a public comment, so I wanted to talk about our house, like our...
Sorry, have you already dialed in today?
Item number twelve is the one.
So have, let me just ask you, have you already spoken today?
I haven't, yeah, I haven't, I haven't been able to speak on a, on an item, no.
Sorry, I don't understand. Have you already spoken in today's council meeting, and you're calling again?
Yeah, because I couldn't, I didn't know which item I was speaking on before.
Oh, so you're the person who spoke on general public comment a minute ago?
Yeah.
Okay, let's, if you want to speak on...
What item do you want to speak on?
But actually, item twelve is not open for public comment.
Yeah, that item's already, that item's not...
Oh, what do we, what do we have?
That public comment has already been satisfied on item number twelve. Is there any other item you'd like to speak on?
Whatever, what's the item the last man was speaking on regarding Project Room Key?
I'm sorry, we can't, I can't, I don't understand what you're asking.
I'm trying to speak on Project Room Key, but I can't find the item in your report. It's just, I'm learning how to decode...
There is no Project Room Key item on today's agenda.
Oh, about the hotels who won't rent things out because they're...
Speaker, that you've exhausted the comment that you can use today.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Gotcha.
All right. Thanks for the understanding.
Thank you. Just go ahead and take the next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in three four eight nine, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Good morning. This is Tiffany Malanbi. Just general public comment.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think it's important while we're discussing how to attack homelessness in the city that we also consider the impact of sending police when you're doing CARES sweeps, whether they are quote-unquote "smart" officers or not. And I also think it's a misuse of public funds to be using funds from the Department of Mental Health to pay for these smart teams. So I really think that the city council should reconsider its support for the MEU and CARES project. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in one two three six, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in one two three six, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in one two three six, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in one one zero eight, please press star six.
Yeah, hi, it's Daniel Gus. All items and general, please.
Three minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, great. I, I see a lot of items on agendas, on the agenda today regarding homeless housing, and then you're using the phrase for unhoused individuals. And I don't know if it's just the way some people write agenda items versus the way other people deal with this, but there needs to be consistency because if you refer to a group of people who do not have a, let's just say, a residence of their own, you're confusing the public, and the last thing that LA City Council or any government needs is to use different terms for the same things. You use homeless or homelessness in some cases. On today's agenda, you have something about unhoused individuals. I believe the LAPD uses a different phrase altogether. And if the city wants people to genuinely understand what good things you're attempting to do, you need to use the same words for the same circumstances, calling them unhoused here and homeless there. And variations of this is going to confuse people, and it furthers the mistrust that already exists between the public and the LAPD and city council. Council members, there is a disturbing article, I guess we can go on to general comment, in Knock L.A. about an LAPD officer keeping canine officers caged for up to three days at a time. The officer's presently being investigated, but all of the dogs, who are canine officers for the LAPD, need to be taken away from this guy while he is under investigation, and his name is Joshua Niss, K-N-I-S-S. That is a very, very serious allegation, and it appears that he may be also deriving a second income using LAPD dogs for security for his landlord. That's a deeply disturbing case. Regarding my new column in City Watch L.A., it's called "LAPD Was Hacked, Or Is It Lying Again?", in which I prove something that you guys reported to officers in the field is being denied that it was distributed by Central. This places every officer's life in immediate danger. It's on citywatchla.com called "LAPD Was Hacked, Or Is It Lying Again?" And if the city doesn't come clean on what it transmitted from Central to its officers, I will no longer redact the story, and I will expose the person's name because you're putting that person in immediate danger. You're putting your own officers in danger. And as I said from the other story, your canine officers are apparently being misused by Officer Joshua Niss, K-N-I-S-S. These are really serious allegations being leveled against the LAPD, partially by me. But if your officers are denying, or if Central is denying that it's transmitting misinformation about an alleged assassin of two LA Sheriff's Departments... of two LA Sheriff's Department deputies, you're putting your officers in immediate danger...
Thank you, Mr. Gus.
...by not coming clean on this stuff. I encourage you to look at what my new article says and go to knockla.com for the story on allegedly abused LAPD canine officers. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1236, please press star six.
And that concludes general public comment. There aren't any more speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, why don't we go ahead and vote on the following items? Let's vote on items number one through five, and items 21 through 42. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo.
Sidiyo, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Yes.
They still haven't seen me, but I voted on the record.
Excuse me. Councilmember Corretts.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Kirkorian.
When they picked the role, members put on their dino piece.
Members, would you please mute yourselves? Thank you. Please continue, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Kirkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes. These items are adopted.
Can we just move on to item number 43? This was a closed session item. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam President. And if I may, for the record, in the case entitled Echo Homes, Inc. versus the City of Los Angeles, the recommendation is that council agree to reconsider the vesting tentative tract map and the related appeal and environmental clearance Would you like to open the roll?
Yes.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo. Councilmember Sidiyo.
Sidiyo, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Kirkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fourteen ayes. This item is adopted.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to item number 12. There's been a request by Mr. Price to recuse himself. Will you please take him off the board?
I'm ahead of him to the next one.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on item number 12. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Kirkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell. Price recused. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes. This item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item number 11, called special by Mr. Bonin.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, to, to highlight this item because in a pandemic, expanding healthcare services is always a, a, a good thing to, to highlight. Uh, for years, a couple decades now, on the West Side, what used to be Daniel Freeman Hospital in Marina Del Rey has been under threat of potential closure, uh, which would have cut a, a crucial, uh, healthcare service on the West Side. I was really pleased when a couple years ago Cedars purchased it, uh, and, uh, really turned the place around. And, uh, this item here today is approving an enhancement and an expansion of that hospital, which is in Marina Del Rey on Lincoln Boulevard, right at Mindanao. The new main hospital building is going to be 200,000 square feet larger than the current 96,000 square foot structure, and it's going to increase capacity from 133 beds to as many as 160. It's going to expand the number of operating rooms from six to 10. Uh, the hospital's going to feature new and enhanced services and programs, including an emergency department with expanded diagnostic and treatment facilities, additional private patient rooms, state-of-the-art, uh, operating rooms, cardiac catheterization, and gastroenterology labs, and also will include interventional procedure suites, which will handle complex cases such as treatments for, for strokes and, and, and heart attacks. This is a, a, a really huge benefit for the community. Cedars has been a, a great partner in the neighborhood, uh, on a number of, of, of issues. And on this project, they did tremendous outreach and, and brought in the support, uh, of the Del Rey Neighborhood Council, the Del Rey Residents Association, uh, La Vima Marina Council and Homeowners Associations, uh, the LAX Coastal Chamber of Commerce, uh, and additionally, in addition to the healthcare benefit, Cedars has looked at their, their, their numbers of, of all the people who use Cedars, uh, in, uh, in, outside of my district and who, who tend to get in their car and travel to it. Uh, and there's a, a large number of them, and this will cut down on, on traffic on the West Side by giving people an opportunity to get their healthcare closer to home and not have to drive over to, uh, Mr. Corretts' uh, through Mr. Corretts' neighborhoods. So, um, just would recommend, uh, a favorable vote on this and look forward to, to having Cedars as a continued good partner in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item. Item number 11. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo.
Sidiyo, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Kirkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes. This item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item number 13. This was called special by Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I'd like to first thank councilmembers Lee and Rodriguez for bringing this motion forward. We approved the item last week in the Homelessness and Poverty Committee. It's regarding the greater Los Angeles homeless count and the current status of the Mental Evaluation Unit and the Systemwide Mental Assessment Response Team. Uh, colleagues, the nearly 40% discrepancy between the LA Times analysis and the LOSA data regarding the number of people experiencing homelessness affected by mental health disabilities and/or substance abuse disorder is startling. The UCLA study, which came out around the same time, has an even larger discrepancy. Contextually, this motion is also part of our council's larger movement to decouple armed police response to mental health and substance abuse crises calls. Right now, the reality is that the police often respond to these calls. That's the reality we're working on changing for people experiencing homelessness, homelessness and mental health issues, but pose no threat to the public. Unarmed responses to assist people, oftentimes who are homeless in distress. By evaluating our current programming for responding to individuals experiencing homelessness with mental health and/or addiction issues, often exacerbated by homelessness, as a council, we can help ensure that the intersection between homelessness and mental and physical health is directly and effectively addressed, to the point where we help get people on a path to wellness and long-term permanent housing. We need accurate data, knowing that will highlight some of our current system's deficiencies and inadequacies, inadequacies, rather, in order to mitigate them. Lastly, that is why today I'm introducing two motions for a forensic look into the services provided by the three county departments of public health, which are obligated by contractual agreement with the City of Los Angeles on behalf of the over 41,000 City of Los Angeles residents who are experiencing homelessness, as the health, mental health, and other supportive services for individuals experiencing homelessness are determinately insufficient, especially as it relates to people who are experiencing homelessness affected, again, by mental health and/or substance abuse distress. We need to set homelessness reduction goals, make sure that all available resources are dedicated to placing everyone experiencing homelessness on a road to wellness, uh, and again, to permanent housing. And this motion is a big part of that discussion. Uh, so colleagues, I ask for your aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Let's prepare to vote on this item, item number 13. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo.
Sidiyo, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson. Yes, yes.
Thank you. Corretts.
Aye.
Kirkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes. This item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item 18, called special by Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Uh, I called this item special to note a milestone in my efforts with the Reseda Community on, uh, project in my Reseda Rising Initiative. The item itself represents the best of a collaborative effort through a memorandum of agreement between the Bureau of Sanitation, uh, and Environment, Recreation and Parks, DWP, all regarding the operation and maintenance of the Caballero Creek Confluence Wetlands Park. The Caballero Creek Park is a joint project with the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, and I'm very grateful for their efforts on this. They have been amazing, uh, pushing this through. It will be on a 1.5 acre passive park on the south side of the river across from Reseda High School, uh, with whom we've partnered to make it an outdoor classroom for their science curriculum. Led by teachers, students will walk to the park to take water samples, study biodiversity, and much more. The park will assist the Bureau of Sanitation in their efforts to improve water quality, and it's also listed as one of the Recreation Parks 50 Park Initiatives. It's a perfect example of departments working together. Uh, as I mentioned, it's part of my Reseding Rising Initiative to reinvest in the community and help Reseda attain its former glory as the center for entertainment, small business, and a great place to work and play. Recognizing the challenges presented by the dissolution of the CRA in, in 2011, I launched this initiative to develop a community, a shared vision for the Reseda Community, uh, and to support the activities that will make Reseda once again a destination for parks, commerce, art, and culture. This park joins the Aliso Creek Confluence Park, the Reseda Town Center, the Reseda Ice Skating Rink, Reseda Theater, our Great Street Sherman Way, and the Reseder River Loop and Bike Path as another project in my quest, since I've taken office, to reinvest and revitalize this underserved community that has often been left behind. And I want to close by saying, uh, giving a thank you to the mayor for his support on this project and to the MRCA for their diligent work putting it all together. The MRCA is dedicated to the preservation and management of local open space and parkland, wildlife habitat, watershed lands, and trails in both wilderness and urban settings. And they're also dedicated to ensuring public access to public parkland. They work in cooperation with Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, our city departments, and my office, and they were vital in the planning process. Their scientific expertise, critical regional planning services, and education and leadership program for thousands of youth each year will be key when we complete this park because, uh, they are one of the lead agencies revitalizing the Los Angeles River and its tributaries. With that, I ask for your aye vote, uh, on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Let's prepare to vote on this item, item 18. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Kirkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson. Councilmember Wesson.
Aye. Wesson, aye.
Thank you.
Fourteen ayes. This item is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, let's move on to any verbal motions that have been submitted. How many do you have?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. There are six verbal motions for the clerk to read into the record.
Okay, go ahead.
The first verbal motion introduced by councilmember Corretts. It's a Rule 16 that authorizes the LA Department of Transportation to invoice the Encino Neighborhood Council up to $9,204.90 for a portion of the cost of changing the existing anti-grid lock signs on the eastbound side of Ventura Boulevard between Balboa and Sepulveda Boulevards. And a second, or?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lee. Next.
The next verbal motion, also a Rule 16, has been introduced by councilmember Bonin. This is to consider the results of a Tefra public hearing held on September 14th for Thatcher Yard and to adopt the Tefra Resolution approving the issuance of bonds in an amount not to exceed $41 million for the new construction of a 98-unit multifamily housing project located at 3233 South Thatcher Avenue. And a second, or?
Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you.
Next.
The next verbal motion to be referred to the Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee has been presented by councilmember Bonin. This is to exempt the Emergency Management Department from the managed hiring freeze for the vacant or pending vacant positions of one Assistant General Manager, three Emergency Management Coordinator Twos, and four Emergency Management Coordinator Ones. And a second, or?
Second.
Can you repeat the second?
Corretts.
Mr. Corretts.
Thank you.
Next.
The next motion was introduced by councilmember Mike Bonin to be referred to the Public Safety and Planning and Land Use Management Committee. It is to request that the Department of City Planning, with the assistance of the Emergency Management Department, Department of Transportation, and LAFD, report back on the capacity, safety, and viability of existing and potential evacuation routes in very high fire hazard severity zones, and to identify the policies to support these evacuation routes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Corretts. Next one?
The next motion was introduced by councilmember Marquis Harris Dawson to be referred to the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee. It is to name the intersection at West 78th Street and Southwestern Avenue as Reverend Richard Mary Carr Bird Square, and asks that the Department of Transportation be directed to erect permanent ceremonial signage to affect this location. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lee. Next?
And the final motion was introduced by, co-presented by councilmembers David Rue, Monica Rodriguez, and Council President Martinez. It is to be referred to the Health, Education, Neighborhood, Parks, Arts, and River Committee. It is to instruct the Department of Cultural Affairs to report on the feasibility of installing a monument in honor of Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Well, actually, there's already been four seconds by councilmember Blumenfield, Bonin, Marquis Harris Dawson, and Corretts.
Okay, gentlemen, hold on for just a second. Um, start with the first second, Mr. Rue. Was that Mr. Bonin?
Bonin.
Okay, Mr. Bonin, can you confirm that?
No confirming.
Thank you. Next second?
Blumenfield.
Mr. Blumenfield, thank you. Third?
Marquis Harris Dawson. Confirmed.
Thank you. The last one?
Corretts.
who, because of not being apprehended, could by their actions further terrorize and present a continuing and immediate menace to the rights of persons in the city, that what happened to the victim is an especially disturbing crime, and therefore, as a matter of public policy, the city hereby offers reward as an added inducement for persons to come forward with information leading to the identification, apprehension, and conviction of the person responsible for the death of Hakeem Jamal Colbert, that the sum of fifty thousand dollars shall be the aggregate maximum sum of any payment or payments of the city reward in this instance, that the offer of reward shall be in effect for six months from the date of the advertisement of the reward by the city clerk. And I further move that the city clerk be directed to cause notices and/or advertisements to be duly published according to the requirements of Division Nineteen, Chapter Twelve, Article One of the L.A. Admin Code, and to thereby cause the offer of reward to become effective. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Farrell. Any others? Mr. Buscaino?
That's it, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Blumenfield?
Thank you. I've got two motions. The first one is basically to move some twelve-ninety money to facilitate the purchase of land for a project, specifically, it reads, "I move that the council action of August nineteenth, twenty-twenty, relative to the real property acquisition, development, expansion of the Reseda Skate Facility project at one-eight-two-two-oh and one-eight-two-three-eight West Sherman Way in Council District Three be amended to transfer slash appropriate one million dollars in the AB twelve-ninety fund, number fifty-three P, account number two-eight-one-two-oh-three, to a new account in the Recreation and Parks Fund, number two-oh-five-dash-eight-eight, entitled Reseda Skate Park Acquisitions." The understanding that any portion of this amount not used for the stated purpose shall be returned to their source, and that the Recreation and Parks Department be authorized to make any technical corrections or clarifications to the above instructions in order to effectuate the intent of this motion.
Second.
That was second by Mr. Sidiyo. Next one, Mr. Blumenfield?
Okay, the next one is basically to conform our FER ban that we did as a city with the state action, but to maintain our date of enactment, several whereases, but I'll read the moving clause, which is, "I therefore move that the City Attorney's Office amend the ordinance fifty-three point seven-five so the amended ordinance mirrors and is fully consistent with AB forty-four to become effective on January one, twenty-twenty-one, and to sunset on December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two, immediately prior to the date on which AB forty-four becomes operative." And Mr. Caretz has seconded this motion.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Caretz, thank you. Mr. Price?
That's it, thank you. Madam President, my motion, the moving clause, "I therefore move that the City Council instruct the Housing and Community Investment Department, with the assistance of the Chief Administrative Officer, to review the Broadway Apartments and Third Street Apartments projects, identify possible sources for GAAP funding, and report to the City Council for the next thirty days with recommendations on how to proceed with both housing projects." And I believe it was seconded by Mr. Sidiyo.
Mr. Sidiyo, can you confirm that?
Confirmed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are any other verbal motions, members? Okay, Madam Clerk, what's next?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred. Members, any announcements? I have an announcement. Just a reminder that today is National Voter Registration Day. I just want to remind everyone to register to vote or check your voter registration status for the November third general election at the following website, registravot.ca.gov. Given the situation that we're in, now more than ever, I think it's important for everyone to let their voices heard. This pandemic, if it showed us anything, has definitely highlighted how elected officials can influence our everyday lives. I think we need to see more women, more people of color, more younger voters vote in huge numbers this election. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to remind everyone how important it is for us to all be able to vote this November. And again, please register before October nineteenth, which is the absolute deadline. So thank you very much. Mr. Caretz?
Madam Chair, sorry, I was struggling with my proper buttons and did not get my motion in time, but I have a verbal motion to add. And the motion relates to-
Hold on for just a second, Mr. Caretz. Hold on for just a second.
An HHH housing project.
Mr. Caretz, can you hold on for just a second?
Yes.
Okay, hold on for just a second, since we already posted and referred today's agenda. Let me get some clarity from the Mr. City Attorney. Hold on, Mr. Caretz. Go ahead, Mr. Caretz, we're just gonna go ahead and post and refer it after you're done.
Okay, so this is a motion on an HHH project funding, and the moving clauses, "I therefore move that the City Council consider the attached results of the Tefra public hearing held on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty, for eleven-thousand-ten Santa Monica Boulevard, and adopt the attached Tefra Resolution approving the issuance of bonds in the amount not to exceed sixteen million three-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the new construction of a fifty-one-unit multifamily housing project located at eleven-thousand-ten Santa Monica Boulevard, Los Angeles, California, nine-oh-oh-two-five, in Council District Five."
Yes. Sidiyo, second.
Mr. Sidiyo, the second. Any others? Mr. Caretz?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
And then, Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred, thank you. Any other announcements, members? Okay, I request that today we adjourn in the memory of Supreme Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, and Ms. Rodriguez, and I will be adjourning in her memory. Ms. Rodriguez, can you please start us off?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, today, Councilwoman Martinez and I, and I'm sure many of you, if not all of us, would like to adjourn our meeting in the memory of Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, who passed away on September eighteenth at the age of eighty-seven. Justice Ginsburg was born on March fifteenth, nineteen thirty-three, and raised in the Flatbush neighborhood of Brooklyn in New York. She attended local public schools and went on to college at Cornell University, where she met her future husband, Martin Ginsburg. They married after college graduation in nineteen fifty-four. After Martin was drafted into the U.S. Army, the Ginsburgs spent two years in Oklahoma, where he was stationed. Their daughter Jane, their first child, was born during this time. The Ginsburgs then moved to Massachusetts, where Martin resumed, and Justice Ginsburg began studies at Harvard Law, sorry, Harvard Law School. She was one of only nine women in a class of more than five hundred, and found the dean asking her why she was taking up a place that a man should go. While she completed her coursework and served on the editorial staff of the Harvard Law Review, she was the first woman to do so. She acted as caregiver not only to Jane, but also to Martin, who had been diagnosed with testicular cancer. In an interview, she stated, quote, "I also worried about managing the first year of law school with an infant to care for, and my father's advice was, 'If you don't want to go to law school, no one will think the less of you. But if you really want to become a lawyer, you will stop feeling sorry for yourself, and you'll find a way.'" Following that advice, at important turns in my life, I asked myself, "Do I really want this? And if I do, I try to find a way." With dedication and discipline, she found the way. During the year of her husband's illness, he was not only able to eat, he was not only able to eat late at night, after that would dictate his senior class paper to her, at about two AM, he would go back to sleep, as she would recall. Then he would start studying the next day, she would start studying the next day, reading what she needed to do for class the next day. She had remarked about that experience and noted that it was that discipline of both balancing the need to be a mother and a wife that really helped to drive her focus for her studies and her academics in the earlier parts of her day. This type of discipline and passion she had for learning the law informed the type of approach that she had during her career. After her husband, who took a year, who was a year ahead of her in law school, recovered and graduated, he took a job at a law firm in New York City. Justice Ginsburg completed her final year of law school at Columbia Law, serving on the Law Review and graduating in a tie for first place in her class in nineteen fifty-nine. Despite her impressive qualification, no New York City law firms would hire her because she was a woman. She spent two years clerking for a federal district judge, who agreed to hire her only after one of her mentors threatened never to send the judge another law clerk if he did not. After her clerkship, she went on to teach at Rutgers Law School. She had her second child, James, during this time. She also started volunteering with the New York, with the New Jersey affiliate of the ACLU, where she started arguing gender discrimination cases. In nineteen seventy-two, she left Rutgers to teach at Columbia, and she became founding counsel of the ACLU's Women's Rights Project in order to challenge laws that treated men and women differently. She masterminded a strategy based on the assumption male judges might empathize with plaintiffs of their own gender to successfully challenge laws that treated people differently on the basis of their gender. She fought not only for women who were discriminated against, but also for the men who had been denied legal benefits designated for women. In nineteen seventy-one, she wrote her first Supreme Court brief in the case of Reed versus Reed, where she represented Sally Reed, who thought she should be the executor of her son's estate instead of her ex-husband. The constitutional issue was whether a state could automatically prefer men over women as executors of estates. The all-male Supreme Court ruled they could not. It was the first time the court had struck down a state law because it discriminated based on gender. In an interview with NPR, Justice Ginsburg said, quote, "The words of the Fourteenth Amendment's equal protection clause, nor shall any state deny any person the equal protection of the laws." Well, that word, 'any person,' covers women as well as men, and the Supreme Court woke up to that reality in nineteen seventy-one. Victories followed with Frontero versus Richardson in seventy-three barring gender discrimination in compensation of military members, and Weinberger versus Weinsfeld in seventy-five, striking down gender discrimination in state benefits. During the seventies, while teaching full-time at Columbia, she argued six successful landmark cases before the Supreme Court overseeing more than three hundred gender discrimination cases on the ACLU's Women's Rights Docket. Her Supreme Court case victories forced laws to change across the country. At the time, many laws codified men as breadwinners and women as dependents. Through her cases, these laws were declared unconstitutional. Her accomplishments were numerous, and Ms. Martinez will continue to share them now.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg was a champion for race and gender equality, a trailblazer on women's equality, and a civil rights hero and feminist icon. As you heard from Councilwoman Rodriguez, well before she was even appointed to the Supreme Court, Ginsburg was already, had already left her mark on American history, law, and the fight for racial and gender equality. In nineteen eighty, President Jimmy Carter named Ginsburg to the U.S. Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia Circuit, where she served thirteen years before President Bill Clinton nominated her to the Supreme Court in nineteen ninety-three, when she was confirmed by a ninety-six, three vote in the Senate. At the time, she was the only, she was the only the second woman appointed to the Supreme Court. Just three years into her tenure, as a relatively new Supreme Court Justice, Ginsburg wrote the Court's seven-one opinion declaring the Virginia Military Institute no longer, could no longer remain an all-male institution. Twenty-two years later, in August of twenty eighteen, Justice Ginsburg visited the Virginia Military Institute for the first time and addressed the cadets, which included nearly two hundred women among the student body of seventeen hundred. She told the cadets that she knew that that decision would make VMI a better place. Over the years, as Ginsburg's place on the court grew in seniority, so did her role. In two thousand and six, after Justice Sandra D. O'Connor retired, Ginsburg became the only woman on the court until two thousand and nine. She said in two thousand and fourteen interview that her years as a so-female justice were the worst times. She said, "Imagine to the public entering the courtroom with eight men of a certain size, and then this little woman sitting to the side. This was not a good image for the public to see." When asked, "Would there be enough women on the Supreme Court?", Justice Ginsburg famously replied, "When there are nine." People are shocked, but we've seen nine men, and no one's ever raised a question about that. As the court turned further right, Justice Ginsburg dissented more often, more assertively, and more passionately, especially in women, in women rights cases. Justice Ginsburg pointed, Justice Ginsburg's pointed and powerful dissenting opinions made her a cultural icon and inspired a young generation of women who admired her achievements, intellect, fierce advocacy, and determination. While Justice Ginsburg's dissenting opinions did not have the force of the law, her ideas and words influenced a national dialogue. Dissenting in the Letter Better versus Goodyear in two thousand and seven, she called on Congress to pass legislation that would override a court's decision that drastically limited back pay available for victims of employment discrimination. And the Lilly Led Better Fair Pay Act, which put into place worker protections against pay discrimination, was passed and signed into law by President Obama in two thousand and nine. In two thousand and thirteen, Ginsburg dissented when the Supreme Court gutted the Voting Rights Act, stating that the times had changed and that the law was no longer needed. In perhaps one of her best-known dissents, she said that throwing out key provisions of the Voting Rights Act, when it worked and is continuing to work, is like throwing away your umbrella in a rainstorm because you're not getting wet. And in two thousand and fourteen, she dissented fiercely in the Burwell versus Hobby Lobby in a decision that allowed some companies to refuse on religious grounds to comply with federal mandate to cover birth control in healthcare plans. Such an exception, she said, would deny legends of women who do not hold their employer's beliefs access to contraceptive, contraceptive coverage. Small in stature, stature, shy, and often self-spoken woman, Justice Ginsburg was still known for being a tough-as-nails. Even after five bouts of cancer, Justice Ginsburg kept a grueling schedule worked out regularly and made public appearances both nationally and internationally. Throughout her life, she sought for equal rights for women as a mother, as an attorney, a professor, and during her twenty- Pay Act, which put into place worker protections against pay discrimination, was passed and signed into law by President Obama in two thousand and nine. In two thousand and thirteen, Ginsburg dissented when the Supreme Court gutted the Voters, the Voting Rights Act, stating that, that the times had changed and that the law was no longer needed. In perhaps one of her best-known dissents, she said that throwing out key provisions of the Voting Rights Act, when it worked and is continuing to work, is like throwing away your umbrella in a rainstorm because you're not getting wet. And in two thousand and fourteen, she dissented fiercely in the Burwell versus Hobby Lobby in a decision that allowed some companies to refuse on religious grounds to comply with federal mandate to cover birth control in healthcare plans. Such an exception, she said, would deny legends of women who do not hold their employer's beliefs access to contraceptives, contraceptive coverage. Small in stature, stature, shy, and often soft-spoken woman, Justice Ginsburg was still known for being a tough-as-nails. Even after five bouts of cancer, Justice Ginsburg kept grueling, a grueling schedule worked out regularly and made public appearances both nationally and internationally. Throughout her life, she sought for equal rights for women as a mother, as an attorney, a professor, and during her twenty-seven years on the Supreme Court. She was determined, fearless, relentless, resilient, and a fierce advocate for women's rights and civil rights. It's hard to overstate the incredible impact she had on women across the nation. She forever changed the lives of American women. She is survived by her two children, Jane Carol Ginsburg and James Stephen Ginsburg, her four grandchildren, her two step-grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. Justice Ginsburg, may you rest in peace. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President, to you and Ms. Rodriguez for allowing us to take a moment to, to pay tribute to the notorious RBG. At, I'm reminded of her stature, five feet tall and weighing a hundred pounds, at the same time she was able to move mountains. She was known for her razor-sharp dissents, which helped push our nation toward freedom and opportunity for all. And just to add to, Madam President, your reference of the Ledbetter v. Goodyear on the gender base of pay discrimination, one thing that stood out in that argument, she wrote, and I quote, "In our view, the court doesn't comprehend or is indifferent to the insidious way in which women can be victims of pay discrimination. The ball is in Congress's court to correct the court's ruling," end quote. And of course, as you mentioned, Madam President, two years later, President Obama signed the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Act, Pay Act, which extended the Civil Rights Act statute of limitations and guaranteed women equal pay for equal work. But, but members, what I'm most impressed with, and I'm hopeful with this relationship that Justice Ginsburg's friendship had with Justice Scalia that our country can move towards peace and love. Now, this friendship she had with Justice Scalia, her ideological opposite, even though these two interpreted the law so differently, they were able to do so civilly with such a great friendship that they were fictionalized in an opera, if you recall, called Scalia v. Ginsburg. An incredible relationship. Let's be reminded of this relationship that she had with Justice Scalia in a time of this country's divisiveness. But all of her accomplishments and her life's work, which we're celebrating here, are at stake with the selection of her replacement, and I hope and pray that, once again, we can become united, and I pray that the notorious RBG continues to be a hero for little girls like our daughters and inspire women to, for generations to come. May her memory be a blessing, and may perpetual light shine upon her. I do, Madam President, want to recognize, um, the San Pedro Democratic Club, who at last minute organized an incredible candlelight vigil here in San Pedro in RB, in Justice Ginsburg's memory. Shannon Ross, the president of the Democratic Club, we were joined by Supervisor Hahn, Patrick O'Donnell, our Assembly Member, Diane Middleton, our Harvard Commissioner, Sergio Correa, the vice chair of the L.A. Democratic Club, Luisa Graz, the present ILW Local Twenty-Six, Rabbi Kale from Temple Beth El. It was an amazing time to reflect on her life, a beautiful candlelight vigil in honor of Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Ruth?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, um, Councilmember Rodriguez, for, um, bringing this adjournment, and I just wanted to also add that, you know, Ruth Bader Ginsburg was a legal genius and an inspiration to so many. Um, this daughter of immigrants and the first in her family to go to college didn't let anything stand in her way. More than anything, Ginsburg had the courage, she believed in her skill, her purpose, and that a more equal world was possible. Nothing, not a sexist law school dean, nor gender discrimination in law, could stop her. And over a legal career that spans over half a century, she changed the course of history. She leaves behind a legacy of justice which lives on the unbridled dreams of our next generation. She has earned her rest, and now the fight for justice and equality must carry on with us all. May she rest in peace.
Mr. Blumenfeld?
Great, thank you. I want to certainly add my, my voice to the chorus, uh, in terms of praising Ruth Bader Ginsburg and mourning her loss. Uh, it's funny, Joe, when, when Buscaino was talking about her, her moniker of a notorious RBG, I remember an, an interview I saw with her on TV where someone said to her, you know, "How do you feel about that, that nickname, being compared to Biggie Smalls and, and all that?" And, and she just said, "No, I love it," you know, and she, she said, "Hey, we're both from Brooklyn," meaning her and Biggie, and, uh, you know, and she, and the nickname was, was given to her by a law school student in twenty seventeen because of, she had written a particularly hard-hitting dissent on a, a Supreme Court action where they were, were basically neutering part of the Voting Rights Act, and she was so incensed with that that she wrote a particularly hard-hitting piece, and that's what earned her that nickname. But I always think about her, um, her amazing career, but I was working on Capitol Hill, uh, back when she was confirmed in, in ninety-three, and I remember it well because there was a lot of excitement around it. Um, here was, you know, the second woman on the court, uh, the first Jewish woman in twenty-five years, first Jewish woman ever, but first, uh, uh, there had been Jewish justices, but not for twenty-five years. There were a lot of people excited about her for a lot of reasons, but unlike the court nominations of today, uh, it went really smoothly. Um, you know, there were a few dissents, but basically, she was, she was embraced by, by all sides, and that, that said a lot about her, even though she was, um, you know, very opinionated and, you know, clearly very, but, you know, her competence was undeniable. It was undeniable then, uh, as it is, and, and certainly now, and we've seen the, the, the work that she has done on the court. You know, and lastly, I'll say, you know, there's, there's something, uh, in the Jewish tradition, there's an idea that if dying on Rosh Hashanah is the mark of righteousness, and she, she did pass away, it said that, that, that if you die just before the Jewish New Year, that you're one of the ones that God held, held back to the last moment because you were needed to be that most righteous. And I think, you know, whether that's folklore or not, it's particularly appropriate now, uh, when thinking about her history, and so may she rest in peace and may she rest in power.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank, thank you, uh, Council President Martinez and Councilwoman, uh, Rodriguez for your very uplifting and comprehensive narrative of her life and her accomplishments as a fierce, uh, woman and, uh, Supreme Court Justice who broke ground and really changed the face of the Supreme Court forever, uh, long before ever being appointed as Supreme Court Justice, cementing her, uh, place in history as the most prominent champion for gender equality. Uh, and then her twenty-seven years on the Supreme Court, what a difference she made. I want to just talk a little bit about the, her incredible contributions to the LGBTQ rights, uh, efforts, uh, and who, which she was such a champion of. Um, she was the first Supreme Court Justice to conduct a same-sex marriage ceremony, uh, back in twenty thirteen, uh, and just recently, the Bostic versus Clayton County, uh, case, Justice Ginsburg joined the decision that found anti-LGBT discrimination is a form of sex discrimination, uh, illegal under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act. It's a broad ruling granting protections to LGBTQ people as it relates to sex discrimination, housing, employment, healthcare, and education. Now, here's why elections matter, here's why it matters profoundly, who our next Supreme Court Justice is to fill her now vacated seat. In twenty seventeen, the DOJ, under Donald Trump, argued that Title VII, which bars discrimination on the basis of sex, does not cover gay or transgender people because Congress has not passed specific LGBTQ protections. The department submitted a brief to the Supreme Court, arguing the same in the cases that ultimately secured the LGBTQ workplace protections that I spoke of. Uh, it's twenty seventeen memo regarding transgender workers has not been withdrawn. Now, we have Lambda Legal and several other LGBT groups fighting the DOJ and the Trump administration on this opinion, uh, and are appealing to Attorney General William Barr. But what's at stake here are the rights of everyone to live equally and fully under the law, and there are far greater implications beyond just the LGBTQ community. Uh, but this is why it's so important that we get involved, that we make sure that our Supreme Court, uh, justices actually weigh the issues and err on the side of expanding rights and not taking them away. Uh, and I, I hope everyone listening, uh, gets involved in this conversation and realizes that so much is at stake. And I think that Justice Ginsburg's legacy, uh, will be that she made it very, very difficult for any future appointee to focus in on eliminating or reducing civil rights that have been gained and not expanding them, uh, based on what is right and what is wrong. Uh, we all are entitled to living life fully, uh, making choices about our own bodies, uh, and I think her legacy is that she expanded that belief, which is evident in polling across the United States, in terms of the causes she fought for. So, um, uh, as, as a member of the LGBTQ community, I want to thank her and, uh, her entire family, uh, and, um, just praise the rights, uh, and the elevation of the conversation, uh, for what she stood for and fought for her entire professional life. Uh, and in the overall scheme of things, she will firmly exist on the right side of history. Thank you.
Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I just wanted to join the rest of my colleagues in recognizing an incredible woman. You know, I believe that both sides really embraced, uh, her when she was confirmed because she was not perceived as someone who was necessarily partisan, but someone who understood the law. And I think it speaks to her legacy that when, you know, I mentioned to my, to my family that I hear about the unfortunate news of, of her passing, that my twelve-year-old son, uh, says, "Isn't that the really strong woman who fought, you know, for all the women's rights?" And, you know, that was, uh, you know, I remember that, you know, we, we all saw the movie, but, uh, that he remembered that, and that, you know, that, that she stuck out in his mind as someone. So, um, she was an incredible person, someone that is, um, gonna be greatly missed by this country, and, uh, may she rest in peace.
Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Madam President. I think just about everything that one could say about her legal genius and her fights on the issues, uh, has been said. I would just add, my, my lasting image of her is, uh, one that, uh, I saw in one of the news programs, uh, showing her working out with weights in her eighties with a personal trainer. Um, and it is, is such a perfect example of her. She knew how important it was for her to remain sharp and healthy and, uh, continue to lead the battle, and she did every way possible. And seeing a woman in her eighties, uh, working out with reasonably heavy weights, um, and just literally fighting that battle in every way, uh, it just gives me that image of the feistiest, uh, Supreme Court Justice we've ever had. Um, and as, uh, Mr. Blumenfeld said, uh, it's ironic that on the last day of the Jewish year, in what has to be the worst year in, uh, any of our lifetimes, um, she passed away on the era of Rosh Hashanah, um, finishing it that year and making it officially the worst year we've ever been through. Um, her, her memory will be a blessing, and hopefully, uh, our, our next Jewish New Year will be much sweeter.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. And Ms. Rodriguez, um, you and I would agree that being the, the two women on this council and women of color, we have greatly benefited from the courage, um, and the tenacity, um, that Justice Ginsburg fought for women's rights. So, with that, I would like to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.